All right, let's go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 31st to order. Please note that based on recommendations from the CDC, we still are asking city council members, city staff, as well as members of the public to wear their face masks for the safety of all. We appreciate your indulgence. In terms of starting time, let the record reflect a starting time of 6:01. And with that being said, could we please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Seven members present.
Fantastic. That brings us to public comment on agenda items. The only agenda item for tonight are the interviews for the First Ward vacancy. Unlike city council, we don't have the sign up sheet, but we do invite folks to come down on a first, come first serve basis. You will have up to three minutes to address the council. Just don't all come at once. So if there's anybody that would like to make public comment, come on down. And please state your name for the record as well. We appreciate it.
Loretta Stanaway, resident since 1985. As you're considering these folks for the position of the First Ward vacancy, I would encourage you to look at things like whether or not they have other employment or other commitments that would restrict their opportunity to devote sufficient time to study the issues, to attend all their required meetings, and to engage with and respond to their constituents. Also, I would strongly urge you to look at things like public service experience, leadership experience, and demonstrated critical thinking skills. It's one thing for someone to be very passionate and concerned, but if they aren't demonstrating critical thinking skills, that doesn't do us a whole lot of good. I hope that there will be someone elected who does not have a personal or a political agenda, who is open to the majority will of the ward and not just to the most vocal segment of the ward. And I'm not familiar with any of these possible replacements for Brandon Betts, other than somewhat familiar with Mr. Coast. But in looking at the resumes, the information online and so forth, I thought that B. Kavanaugh, D. Daniels, or C. Daniels, D. Dowd, and H. Coast were very good possible candidates and should be given strong consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other, sorry, do we have any more public comment? Seeing none, that brings us to agenda item, let's see, four, which are the interviews. We've had quite a few questions. And so what I'm going to do is just very quickly kind of run down in terms of the process for both council members and our candidates. So with regards to council members, we were emailed earlier by city staff. In that email, there were several items included. One, a letter to council members outlining the process for today's first interviews. We also had a copy of the letter that staff emailed to all calendar, I'm sorry, all candidates last Friday, which outlined again the process for the first interviews. We have a list of the questions for finalists that we will actually ask tomorrow, so when we're looking at those three finalists. And these were the same questions that were used back in 2015, and there was a question as to why. Those questions at the time were vetted by law. They were deemed to be lawful, and so we wanted to make sure that we operated within those, those legal parameters. Also, a letter that the candidates will get tonight, or have gotten tonight, sorry, on the next steps, if they are chosen to fill the vacancy was included in that email as well. If you look in your binder, the binder is incredibly important. We appreciate office staff for putting this together. Very, very well done. We have the four items I just referenced on the left side of your binder. So there's actually a pocket to the left, and you can find those four documents there. In the binder itself, staff has sectioned off each candidate's application, as well as any other materials they provided or emails in support of those candidates. We've received one letter for Caitlin Kavanaugh in terms of support. We did receive one letter from Mr. Samuel Kline, two letters of support for Farhan Chikomar, four letters of support for Brian Daniels, and we received five letters of support for Ryan Cost. If you look on the back, or I should say toward the back of the binder, you will see actually the ballot for tonight's vote. Okay? So when we get to that point, you will vote for up to three. You don't have to necessarily vote for three, but you can vote for up to three, and of course you'll sign that. And at the conclusion of the, or right before the conclusion of the meeting, our office secretary will actually read that into the record. On the backside of each one of the blue dividers, you'll notice that there is actually a section for council members to take notes as well. Okay? So feel free to use that as well. In terms of the candidates, all 11 candidates have received a folder upon arrival. If you have not yet received that folder, please see Clerk Swope. He can help you get situated with that. There is in that binder, I'm sorry, in that folder, there's a resolution titled 2019, 219, which includes council and committee of the whole meeting dates, as well as 2022 committee assignments, the 2022 brown bag schedule. These are quarterly meetings that council holds with the mayor. These are actually publicly posted, and we actually adhere to the Open Meetings Act with regards to those meetings. A copy of the letter staff emailed to you on Friday is also in that folder, which kind of outlines tonight's process, as well as the letter on the next steps if you are chosen to fill the vacancy. And then lastly, a copy of the finalist interview questions for tomorrow have been prepared, and we wanted to make you guys all aware at the same time with regards to those. We certainly want to avoid any appearance of impropriety, favoritism, et cetera. So those are being released tonight for the first time. Really quickly, we want to thank each and every one of you for being here. We understand if anybody is intimately aware of kind of the inherent vulnerability of this process, it's us. And so we certainly appreciate the fact that you guys have stepped up and that you want to represent the First Ward in a vigorous, consistent, and passionate way. We really appreciate that. And we understand too what's in front of you in terms of the steep learning curve that you guys will experience this year, the fact that you very well may have to run for reelection this year should you want to fill out that last year of the vacancy, only to turn around again next year and run for, you know, for a fresh set of four years. So we certainly appreciate each one of you as well. Each interview we will, was given, sorry, in alphabetical interview time based on last name. Again, we want to thank the clerk and our office manager for getting these interviews scheduled. With regards to the alphabetical order, again, we did not want to have any appearance of a favoritism or a propriety, and so we thought that that would be the fairest way. Each interview will last no longer than 12 minutes. So we will actually have the timer on the day so that you can see it, so that we can see it, and we ask that you please respect that, that time limit. Each interviewee will begin their time with a personal introduction. What we want to hear in that personal introduction is some information about your personal professional background that you feel is pertinent, any experiences that you believe will assist you in your council work. You think of community service, you think of community organizing and the like, and whether you intend to run to fulfill the final year of the term vacated by former council member Betts. There are three follow-up questions. I will ask those three questions. Those are also in your packet. We will have council members a short break after our fifth interview, and then after all interviews are complete, each council member will choose one of three finalists. As I said earlier, staff will read them into the record, and the finalists will be contacted by 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Okay? And so what we're going to have to do at that time is we're going to have to confirm your attendance for interviews scheduled to take place tomorrow night. The top three vote getters will move on to the second round. More could potentially move on if there are tie votes. So you think of the first, second place, and then two or three people tying for that third place. So again, although we have scheduled our meeting for six, our special city council meeting for eight, understand that could be a little bit longer than that tomorrow. After all interviews are finalized, council will deliberate, and a final decision will be made with seven serving council members. A majority of four will suffice to appoint a new member, and of course, I'm talking about tomorrow's process. A special city council meeting again has been called for 8:00 p.m. tomorrow night. The only agenda items for this meeting is the approval of the appointment and swearing in of the new council member. If you are chosen to fill the vacancy, staff will then contact you on Wednesday of this week by 9:00 a.m. to schedule a one and a half hour orientation on either Thursday or Friday. There are some, some perfunctory things that have to take place. You think of your ID, your office keys, tours, but then we also have to do some incredibly important things. We have to get you as an example scheduled for introductions with our department of directors and in different shops within the city. And also leadership, myself and Vice President Wood will work with each of you to assign, I'm sorry, I should say, the winning candidate to assign both standing committee and outside boards and agency appointments. Also, if you are successful, know that the council will hold their mandatory annual training on the 10th floor of City Hall, beginning at 5:30 p.m. on February 7th. So it's going to be a busy few weeks for whoever is the individual that's chosen by this body. So with that being said, are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Andre Brown, I did see you come on in, and you are going to get first crack at it. So why don't you come on down, come through the double doors. We're going to have you sit right here to our left and to your right, and we're going to make sure that that mic is working. So why don't you go and turn it on. You should see a green light. Go and test it out for us.
Hello?
Hello? How are you doing?
I'm well. How are you?
We are doing very well. I certainly appreciate your interest in the position, because we are on a tight, tight time schedule, we're going to go ahead and get started.
All right.
So again, and everybody is kind of getting a look at how this is going to be done. In terms of the personal introduction, just a little personal professional background regarding yourself, and maybe some experiences that you think will assist you. And then that last piece, do you actually intend to run for the position should you be appointed?
All right. So my name's Andre Brown. I'm a Lansing native and lifelong resident. I am a graduate of the Lansing School District. I currently own four businesses. I'm a limited partner in most of them. We employ a total of 12 people, most of them being Lansing residents. Because of my business ownership, I believe I have great leadership and communication skills. But I'm not here to bore you with small talk of business because it's a job and we all have jobs. I'm actually sitting here before you today to let you know that I'm committed to serving the First Ward. I will announce a campaign to run in the next coming days. As the person who is appointed is expected to run this election and hopefully the elections of '23, that's two years of campaigning. It's quite a lot. I come from an election and campaign background, and if anyone, I want everyone to know that I am committed, and an official campaign announcement will come soon. I'm ready for the next question. Should I just go into it?
So, so Andre, the first question is, why do you want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
Yeah, I have an interest in serving. One, because I'm dedicated to restoring public trust in Lansing's public safety. I'm committed to working with the BIPOC community to ensure everyone in our community feels safe and comfortable. If appointed, I will work with council to aggressively lobby the state to fix our infrastructure for the capital city, and we need to look better to retain jobs. I also know that the First Ward residents really care about public safety and housing. I fully support the council's ad hoc committee to improve housing conditions, and I hope to work with city council to ensure that all dwellings are well maintained for the safety of our residents. I also applaud the mayor and the city police department's effort in hiring social workers. If appointed or elected, I do hope to work with the mayor to increase the number of social workers while protecting the positions of our local officers.
Thank you. We appreciate that. The second question is, what do you know about the responsibilities and the regular activities of this elected position?
Yeah, a lot of people believe that council is only parks and trash and snow removal, but the responsibility is much greater than that. You're required to meet 26 times a year, but you're also the legislative body of the municipality. That job definitely entails more than parks and trash and snow removal. The responsibility is much greater. That responsibility is to create policy through the form of ordinances that attract business development, and most importantly, jobs for the Lansing community. Council also has the responsibility of appointing an internal auditor to serve at their pleasure. And I know that there are many responsibilities that I didn't name today, but they're duties that I'm 100% willing to learn. And...
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry. With that being said, last question for you, Andre. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
Well, I have a background in working with the state government, the state legislature, and municipalities across the state and some across the nation. I'm a registered lobbyist and a political advisor to a variety of organizations from the state. I'm familiar with the legislative process, while all policymaking bodies slightly differ the process across the board is pretty much the same, and I have firsthand experience working with them. I'm not sure if the other applicants do. I believe I'm the only, the only applicant with the direct and hands-on experience of working with state and local governments.
Fantastic. Is there anything else, Mr. Andre Brown, that you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we decide?
No, nothing more than that. I'm from, I'm not a carpet bagger. I'm from the First Ward. I truly believe and understand the issues that people within the community are facing, and I hope to be appointed and/or elected this year or next year to fully represent the will of the people. Thank you.
All right, so, sorry. So our next candidate is Ms. Caitlin Kavanaugh. Caitlin, if you want to come on down. You saw how it was done. Appreciate you being here. Absolutely. And as with Mr. Brown, just make sure the green light is on, so we know we're going. Yep, absolutely. Fantastic. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity.
No, well, we certainly appreciate your willingness and your desire to serve. So that being said, again, we're going to give you a little bit of time just to give us kind of a brief introduction, and then what we'll do is we'll just go through the three questions. And I did confer with the city attorney in terms of follow-up questions and things of that nature. And the reason why we have to be careful with that, this was actually discussed in 2015, is that the questions have to be uniform. And so for folks that are watching at home, if you feel as if there's not enough back and forth, and again, the reason is to, to, to make sure that we're above board in terms of this process, and to make sure that is a, a legal process, if you will, and we have to make sure that we are uniform in our questioning, and that should we, as an example, have any follow-ups, those follow-up questions would have to be asked of every single candidate. Okay?
Mr. Chair, you might also want to point out that you do have application materials in front of you also.
Yes, absolutely. Okay? All right. So Ms. Caitlin Kavanaugh, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kate Kavanaugh. I have been a resident of the First Ward since 2016. I earned my PhD in developmental psychology specializing in the juvenile justice system in 2015, but moved here. I've been an assistant professor at Michigan State University in the School of Criminal Justice. I'm also a core member of MSU's Youth Equity Project. I'm the Associate Director for Undergraduate Education in the School of Criminal Justice.
Oh, thank you. I, I direct the Adolescent Development and Juvenile Justice Lab at MSU, and I am the Director of the Juvenile Risk Assessment Team in partnership with Ingham County's 30th Circuit Court Family Division. I am also a volunteer in the community, whether that takes the form of volunteering at the Ingham County Animal Shelter, serving as a poll worker, or serving as a court-appointed special advocate, which means that I advocate in court on behalf of youth who have undergone abuse and neglect cases. So that's, that's a bit about my personal background, but I can also tell you that I am a researcher at heart, not a politician. I'm a person who believes that the best way to move forward is with good, strong evidence.
Fantastic. The only thing I didn't hear was whether or not, and maybe I missed it, do you actually intend to run?
Oh, I do. I knew I missed something. Yes, I do intend to run both in 2022 and in 2023.
Okay, fantastic. Ms. Kavanaugh, why do you want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
I really see this position as the natural extension of my volunteerism, but I see that it also ties in my expertise in terms of juvenile justice. I know that one of the primary challenges facing the city of Lansing right now is youth violence, particularly youth gun violence. In fact, the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce recently conducted a survey, and that is what is most concerning to Lansing residents at this time. And so I wish to serve because I'm a service-minded person. I come from a family of public servants, and I wish to continue that generational legacy here now that I've made my home in Lansing. And I feel that the best way for me to do so is by extending my current volunteerism into city council.
All right. We appreciate that response. Secondly, what do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Sure. So city council serves as the primary legislative body, and what this means is you're in charge of developing policies and figuring out how to pay for them. Specifically, this position is to represent the First Ward, where I've been a resident. And so that means that I would be in charge of representing the interests of folks from the First Ward. I want to highlight two components of what it means to be on city council, so that I can illustrate how I'm prepared to serve in that role, if that's okay. The first has to do with budgeting. So my, in a different career, before my academic career, I was a political staffer in the European Union Parliament. I worked for a representative, Barbara Matera, from Italy. This is essentially the equivalent of the U.S. House of Representatives, except for the continent of Europe instead of the country of the United States. This was in 2010 during the global financial crisis, and the representative for whom I worked was on the Budgetary Committee. So as you can imagine, we faced a lot of challenges and difficult decisions at that time in terms of how best to budget. So I do have experience in terms of that, that balancing the budget in political situations. I would also like to add that as an academic in my current career, I've earned 16 grants, many of them large national grants. And each time you get a grant at a university, you have to do a lot of budgeting, rebudgeting when things go awry. And so I feel extremely equipped to help the city of Lansing balance its budget in a way that might include making very difficult decisions, especially as we come out of the pandemic and the economic challenges that are associated with that. The second aspect of being on city council that I would like to highlight is consensus building. And I feel that I am an excellent consensus builder, whether it is through serving on national committees for professional organizations, like the Society for Research on Adolescents, or whether it is working with the state of Michigan on the Raise the Age legislation, which raised the minimum age of juvenile jurisdiction to 17. I am really good at working with people from different backgrounds in order to find an outcome that everyone can agree is the best possible outcome. So you asked what city council, what's the function? To me, a lot of that function has to do with consensus building, building and budgeting in order to have a good outcome for the residents of the city.
Thank you. And you certainly touched on some of number three, but what qualities do you believe you bring to council that may distinguish you from other candidates?
Sure. So I feel that I have the expertise to meet the moment. So I am certain that all of the other candidates bring a lot of excellent background, passion, expertise. However, my expertise is juvenile justice. My expertise is in reducing youth violence. And because that's one of the primary emergencies that's facing the city of Lansing right now, it's a true public health crisis, I feel equipped to serve in this moment. And I can say that because of my work with Ingham County 30th Circuit Court Family Division, I am the person that sees those challenges in Lansing through the raw numbers. So what that means is I am the person who manages and who analyzes all of the juvenile justice data for the county. And so I have a very unique perspective on exactly what the challenges are, both in terms of rehabilitative programming and in terms of pathways into crime. I don't mean this to sound braggy, but only because it's relevant. I'm an internationally renowned expert in this area. And so the reason that I stand out from other candidates is because I have a specific set of skills that match the needs of this moment.
Thank you. And is there anything else you would like for us to know before we vote later on tonight?
No, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
We certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you. All right. The next candidate is Mr. Brian Daniels. I do believe, yep, I did see Mr. Daniels in the audience. Want to come on down? And again, make sure that green light is on for us. Why don't you go ahead and speak into it just to make sure.
I think we're good?
Yeah?
Yep. All right. Awesome.
Appreciate you. How's it going, Brian?
I'm well. How are you guys?
Fantastic.
Good.
Appreciate you being here. You've seen how it is done, a little professional, personal background, and then before we get to the questions, let us know whether or not you, yeah, whether or not you plan to run should you be appointed. Thank you.
Yep. Well, first, I just want to say thank you guys for the hard work you've put in over the last couple of weeks. I think we've all kind of had to come together very quickly to make this happen, and I just appreciate the work you guys have put in to make this possible tonight. I'm really happy to be here. I was born in Lansing. My father still lives on the South Side. I grew up in the Lansing area. I'm one of six kids. I, like so many other people in Lansing, didn't necessarily have great opportunities as a kid. When I was in fifth grade, we ended up being homeless, and only because my grandfather was a veteran did I have the opportunity with my family to move into the VFW National Home for Children. This is a, this is in Eaton Rapids, and it's totally supported by veterans. And so I actually continue to do fundraising for them now today. The VFW gave me an opportunity to learn civic duty. It's something also that my mother always pushed into me, and, and stepping up for people and speaking up for people. And after I graduated high school and joined the military in the early 2000s, like so many other people after September 11th, I, I felt that sense of duty, and it compelled me to not only join the military, but I went over to Iraq. In 2005, I was the sole survivor of an IED attack. My right foot was blown off and reattached, and I had to learn to walk again. Outside of being completely broken and having to rebuild, I think that this, this personal experience taught me a lot of empathy. I've, I understand what it's like to, to lose hope. I think that one of the things that we're dealing with in our community right now, you know, I guess nationally is even, is a mental health crisis. And I think that having been through it myself and being able to help other people fight through it is something that I've continued to do. After I got out of the military, I moved to New York City, and I met the owner of a boxing gym. He helped me rebuild my body, and I started teaching classes. I started teaching because one day somebody quit, and I stepped into that position. I saw an opportunity to, to follow my passion and, and help others where I could. I had a son during this time. His name is Gabriel, and when he turned two, we wanted to come back to Lansing so that he could grow up with the same childhood his mom and I had. When I got back, I, I worked at a few different places, but I could never find something that was my own. I needed to, I needed to be able to, to advocate for people and speak my truth. In order to do that, I opened up my own gym with the help of a couple of friends. It's called Empower Lansing. It's on Michigan Avenue. I was lucky enough to open up on the east side, right on Michigan Avenue, and be a part of the resurgence of, of the east side and the Michigan Avenue corridor. I think that we've seen a lot of progress, and I want to continue to make sure that happens. Being right there, I also see and interact with a lot of people on the east side on a regular basis. Those that I haven't met, I will meet in, in the, in the coming months, because I will campaign for 2022 and 2023. What I love about Empower is the sense of community that we've built there. Some, you know, what's, what's great about the city is there's one degree of separation. And so you know somebody who's probably been there, and they can tell you about the energy of it and the acceptance of it, and understanding that no matter who you are or what you believe, you can find community together. This is something that I preach there. It's something that I think we see in the First Ward. There's such diversity there, and it's, it's part of what I, it's part of what I live. I think with, you know, with the First Ward, we see, we see so many different people, and if, I think a perfect example would be at the farmer's market. You see so many different kinds of food. For me personally, Smoothie Queen is, is heaven to me. Once, like, I guess, like so many other small business owners, outside of the day-to-day budget and the grind and the responsibility of that, I had to deal with COVID. I had to figure out how to, A, survive COVID as a small business owner, work through it, and adapt to the real-life risks that we were facing. The minute that we could teach classes outside, I did that. When we came back inside, I made everyone wear masks, and I still do, because I believe in doing what is right, not what is easy. I understand that there's a lot of division right now. I think that everyone is really frustrated, whether it be with local, state, or federal government. I think that there's a lot of distrust, and I want to be a part of healing that process. I, I've, because of how many times I moved as a kid, and because of my life experiences, I've been open to so many different points of views, and I've been able to find community in each of those situations. I'm able to find common ground in each of those situations, and I think that, that will help me positively represent the First Ward and all of the varying views that they have. I understand that there's always the loudest person in the room, but there are so many people in this ward, and I want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. During COVID, I was appointed to the Parks Board, and, you know, as of late, I've been advocating, and I'm sure you guys are aware of the light issue in the parks right now, and I've been advocating for a solar light option as a way to, to facilitate change and keep people safe in Lansing. way to facilitate change and keep people safe in Lansing. Or there are ordinances within the parks that I think have to change as well, and I want to be a part of making sure that people are able to access our parks in these green spaces and then creating more green spaces in the future. You know, I've reached out to so many people in the city in the time that I've been back just to, again, create community, get to know people. And because of that, I've had great support for this opportunity tonight. And while I'm thankful for all of them, you know, they believe in me because I show up. Not only do I show up, but I speak truth. I'm not, I'm not forced by social pressures. I listen, I have compassion, and all I want to do is give the most of myself to this job. I've been able to build a team at Empower that can take care of the teaching and take care of the studio so that I have time for these responsibilities, these committees, these meetings. My son is very excited about the concept of this. I've communicated with him and my wife, Maggie, in making sure that they understand the duties and the time commitment that I'd be making, not to this, but to the two campaigns I'd also be doing. I think a steep Lerming curve is like the perfect, the perfect way to describe all that we're facing, whoever you pick. But like myself and the 10 other people who applied this evening, you know, we passionately do love Lansing. And I, whether you select me or not, you will see me because I will be campaigning. And whether or not I'm selected, I hope to work with whoever you do pick to make sure that we continue to make progress in Lansing. My, I know I'm running a little low on time, but one of the things that I'm doing right now is planning with an organization called Brave Space to have a talk at Empower called Why I Didn't Kill Myself. You know, I, we have all of these teens right now with this gun violence going on and all of these trauma that we're facing and all of these social pressures that we're facing. And I'm trying to create with them spaces, like Brave Space, to be able to express that, to not be afraid to speak up and to not be able, not be afraid to give people that, you know, that opportunity. I think that people want to be heard, and I believe in giving them that opportunity. I know, I try to answer some of the questions there, but is there anything that I didn't say?
No, I appreciate that. That was incredibly thorough. Here's what we're going to do, because I want to move through this process with fidelity. And so we're going to, we're going to go ahead and ask the questions, and you certainly touched on a number of them, but you can feel free to build upon. Okay? So number one, why do you specifically want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
You know, I think that it, I think that this is something that is a natural progression of my life and a continuation of the duty that I made to my city and my country when I joined the military. I believe in service. It's something that I do every day at Empower. I know that it's a business, but I very much serve all of the people that come in there and give them the best of me, and I want to do that for the ward. I want to be able to make sure that everybody's heard and listened to and able to find common ground so we can actually find solutions and get things done.
All right. I appreciate that. What do you know specifically about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Well, I understand that we're going to have to work on budget, and I think between being a small business owner and being on the Parks Board and working on the Parks budget, you know, I've had a taste of that. I understand that it's bigger, and then again, that there'd be a learning curve. But outside of that, with the committees, you know, I understand that there's going to be investigations into how things are run and what needs to be fixed, and I'm committed to learning everything that I need to, to be successful with that.
We appreciate that. Lastly, what qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from the other candidates?
Well, I think that, I think that I bring a certain amount of energy and leadership that a lot of people, I don't necessarily know what the other candidates have, but I know that's something that I exude. I've been lucky in life with the places I've been and the people that I've seen that I have the ability to communicate with everybody and to find common ground and to get people to listen and to, and for myself to be able to just take in what people are saying instead of putting up walls and closing people down. I don't believe that that's the successful way to get things done.
Fantastic. And last, I'm sorry, lastly, I said that last time, right? Is there anything else you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we vote later on tonight?
You know what? No, just, I appreciate, I appreciate the time, and thank you again. Again, you will see me. I will be campaigning, so whether or not I'm chosen, I'm sure that we will cross paths at some point. And for the people in the first ward, if you don't know me, I plan to hit the ground running whether I'm chosen or not. I want to meet with the neighborhood leaders. I want to come up with plans. And, you know, Empower is always open. If you would like to come talk to me, call me, find me, I would love to meet with everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate you being here. All right. Do we have Mr. Benjamin Dowd with us? Fantastic. Mr. Dowd, why don't you come on up? We appreciate you being here. Want to take a seat? Make sure the green light is on. How are you?
Good evening. Hello. Doing well?
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Same thing, we're going to go ahead and give you a period of time to introduce yourself, professional, personal background, any service to the community as an example that you might think will be advantageous to you as you, you know, work to represent the first ward. And then, of course, we want to know whether or not you plan on running should you be appointed, and then we'll go through the series of questions. Okay?
Awesome.
All right. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. So, good evening. My name is Ben Dowd. I've lived in Lansing for seven years now, and for six of them have been actively involved within the community in a variety of ways. So currently, I serve as the president of the Old Town Commercial Association. I've been on that board for six years and the president for the past four. Uniquely for me, we've not had an executive director that ran things in Old Town for the past two and a half years, and I was the person lucky enough to step up and fill that temporary role as I served the presidency and ran my full-time job, right? So my full-time job, I worked for, I had 15 years of banking background, and four years ago transitioned to statewide nonprofit that's housed here in Lansing, SEDOM, the Community Economic Development Association of Michigan. So my job now is working in community development and dealing with communities throughout the state who do the very same work that I do within Lansing. So I've certainly had an opportunity to be involved not only on the ground in my community right in our ward. Old Town obviously splits two wards, first ward and fourth ward, but being right there, being active and being a community leader already within that, within that space. Some of my other involvements, I am the co-chair of Suits in the City, which is the local LGBTQ organization. And one thing I'm proud of, our representation within the city is we are currently, and I'm hoping, or hosting training right now with the Lansing Police Department. So if you've not seen that, we are training every single police officer on the force right now, in fact, back tomorrow, at the Training Center to educate our police department on issues and topics regarding the LGBTQ community. So it's a very important space within our community, and I'm honored that I get the opportunity to really work with every single one of our officers on that, on that important topic. And then, as I mentioned, four years working in the community economic development field has led me to really work with several views, several people within the community, and ensure that we are continuing to grow the Lansing that we know that we need to grow. Yes, I do intend to run. I, not only in '22, but in '23, to fill this seat. I'm very passionate about it. I've definitely seen a lot of, a lot of things come out of my time with Old Town. I'm very proud of where Old Town has put itself. But even between my experience there and cross collaboration with other parts of the community in Ward One, you know, working with folks over at the Allen Neighborhood Center and meeting up with our monthly CED meetings across the community to talk about what's really happening. What does our housing market look like? What's going on with compliance within the city? And we're bringing people in to talk to us every single month about truly what's going on and staying up to speed on what the needs are within the community. So I feel a very good connection to where we are as a city and understanding where we need to continue to grow and what some of those gaps are. So that, that's kind of who I am and what brought me here.
Sure. We appreciate that. Why do you specifically, Mr. Dowd, want to serve on, or as part of this body, the Lansing City Council?
Yeah. So if you would have asked me a couple of years ago if I wanted to do this, I would have told you absolutely not. I felt, as I got ingrained into the city, I felt, oh my God, that's wild. Well, I had the opportunity, and I was a graduate of the Lansing Citizen Academy, so I came through the program and did the 12-week cycle where we got to go through all the different departments. And then, through my experience with Old Town, I also was really fortunate. I've worked with almost all of our department heads within the city on special projects, parking, Dear God Parking. We've talked parking for years. But we, I've worked and I've had the opportunity to listen to people. Once I started to really step back and listen to what people had, we're all, we all have the same concerns, right? And so if I can be that voice for that, for somebody that has a concern, and I can take that and connect them to the person that needs to address that situation, well then I've done a good thing for that. And I think I have a really strong ability to oftentimes take situations that are not easy or conversations that are not easy and help connect folks within the right areas of the city. And I'm already doing that. One of the things I like to take a little pride in, and many of you were here on council several years back when we changed the name from Grand River to Caesar Chavez, there was a lot of turmoil. There was a lot of upset people, and I really, throughout that time, it occurred to me, I didn't understand why there was so much of this turmoil happening, and stepped up to be the voice of reason for so many people to say, look, we're two communities that need to come together. And through that, really formed a nice bond with the solaces and ensuring that we work together as an organization. And now, we both are members of each other's organizations. We work together. That was not an easy time. I'm sure those of you remember the hours and hours upon public comments sitting here from one side or another. And it's really, I think for me, being able to use my leadership to bring people together across the city and especially in Ward One that need a strong person to do that.
We appreciate that. What do you know about, Mr. Dowd, the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
So what has already been said, of course, are the main duties, right? We've got policy to take care of and budgeting. And I think really the basis of this, and the most important part of this, and our job would be nothing if we didn't have the voice of our constituents. I think communication within the city, within the people we deal with, is so extraordinarily important. I will tell you, as a resident, that has been one of, one of my struggles with, especially in the, within the last person in this position, the ability to get communication back and forth just wasn't there, right? Not having any response was not appropriate. So not only do we have the expectation that when we come together as a body, as a council, to set those policies, to go through the budgeting process and advise the current administration, but really, outside of that, taking the time to understand what people want in the community and what they need. And if we do it on our own personal beliefs, our own personal feelings, well then we're just acting on a city that we want individually. And so I think being a strong person for the folks that we're representing is by far the number-one job of us as a council member.
Thank you. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from the other candidates?
I mentioned budgeting. I've been fortunate enough through several nonprofits I've been involved in, and now as my role as the COO of SEDOM, budgeting is my job. So multimillion-dollar budgets each year, that requires months of process similar to how the city kind of manages that budget process before it's ever gone for vetting and approval. There are months and months of reworking the budget and going through that. So budgeting, I am very comfortable in, leading also back to my many years of banking and finances. I think another great thing, as I mentioned already, is my current involvement and relationships that I have with so many departments in the city. I really can call on my phone many people today if I needed to and say, hey, I need this taken care of, or hey, we have an issue, can we, can we get somebody on this? And people are very responsive. I have a very good back-and-forth relationship already with so many of those folks, which is just the nature of the responsibility I was given over the past couple of years. Again, I mentioned the Citizens Academy, having graduated through that, obviously an opportunity to open my eyes to so much of what happens throughout the city administration, city council. And then, lastly, I really think, I would say, everybody would say they're a great communicator. I hope you are if you're interested in this. But I truly do believe that I've got the communication ability to make sure that people feel heard, feel validated, and then take concerns or issues or whatever somebody is needing from me as their representative to the people to make sure that it happens, that it gets done, or be able to talk to them and let them know why it shouldn't happen, right? So being able to have those tough conversations, I really think I bring a strong sense of communication among the constituents, and that would make me a prime candidate.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we vote later tonight?
Nope. I appreciate the opportunity.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our last candidate before break. This is for Mrs. Lysandra Jones. Fantastic. We appreciate you being here. Come on up. All right. So like the others, if you want to just speak into the mic, let's make sure that's working before we get started. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
We're doing really well. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. So like the others, we're going to give you a period of time to just talk a little bit about your personal professional background, anything that you've done maybe throughout the community that uniquely qualifies you for this position. And then, like the others, if you could please let us know whether or not you intend to run for that final year of the term should you be appointed. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where do I start? I'm probably one of the older candidates here, but I've, I'm a 2015 retiree from the state of Michigan, Department of Treasury. I started a nonprofit organization in 1998 called SB's Love Closet that helped the community with clothing, that type of thing, interview techniques. And it's kind of still in existence. I still get calls for clothing, although I don't house clothing anymore, but I always have resources for people. Let's see, I'm involved in elections, been involved in that for, I don't know, eight, nine years. And one of my desires is to see more education on election, educating people that really don't know who they're voting for. They just vote for somebody because they're on the ballot or just, you know, just really educating people about elections before they do it. So yeah, I do plan to run. It's a passion to be in the community. I've been in the community for a long time, and I've seen a lot of ups and downs, so I'm ready for more ups.
Okay. We appreciate that. And I think, you know, it's a perfect segue into the first question. Why do you want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
I believe that I would be a highly effective council member because I'm anchored in the community, and I would like to, you know, see the council move forward. And it's not just about policies, not just about agendas, rather, but it's about the people. And seeing that the community gets the things that they need to hear the voice, and I've always been the voice for the underdog, so I really am a people person when it comes to the community people, the underserved. So I believe that my voice on the council would be effective.
Thank you. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Well, I know that, as forestated, there's, you know, council sets policies, approves budgets, I guess determining the tax rates, adopts ordinances and things like that, resolutions to govern the city, protects the public interest. So that's pretty much what I know.
Okay. Fantastic. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
Well, I believe, I'm not, you know, I don't know the other candidates too much, but I believe that my integrity, I have a longstanding, and I'm not a bully, but I believe in pursuing. And I, I mean, a good council person is able to communicate intelligently and get the point across without having to argue with people. I'm not a big on arguing. and get the point across without having to argue with people, I'm not a big on arguing, but I do like to come together and get things done. I'm not a big talker, but I'm a big walker, I guess you could say, I believe in, you know, doing the walk, not a whole lot of talk, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones, is there anything else you'd like us to know before we make our decision later on tonight?
Just that, I believe that I would be a good fit with the council, because, you know, the council is about the community, and it is for the public, and I love being in the community, I love being with the people out here, I'm not afraid, I've been in my area where I live for almost thirty years, which is on the east side, in my ward, Ward One, and so I know the community, I know a lot of the needs, I know what people talk to me about, and there's a lot of need out here, and so I would like to be one to help meet those needs, so.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, here's the deal, first and foremost, I want to speak on behalf of this body and say how much we appreciate you all, you were here on time, you were incredibly prepared, and because of that, we certainly are ahead of schedule. To be fair to those folks that are scheduled actually after the break, we are going to take all the way up until seven thirty, and so we're not going to actually adjust and modify that, so what we're going to do is go and stand at recess until seven thirty, we'll come back seven thirty sharp, and we'll begin with Mr. Samuel Kline, thank you. Sorry folks, and just so you know, there is food in the council conference room, okay? All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting, it is seven thirty, and very quickly, we have a number of folks that have arrived even since we took the break, and we want to make sure that we are fair, and, you know, in terms of this process, and that everybody is getting the same information before actually coming down to the well and interviewing before this body, so just very quickly, when you came in, you were supposed to do a couple of things, number one, you were supposed to sign in, and that will help obviously office staff with regards to, you know, if we need to make any changes on our name with regards to spelling of name, address, that type of thing, and the other piece is you were supposed to pick up a green folder, and in that green folder are a few documents, first of all, Resolution 2019-219, which includes all council and committee of the whole meetings for 2022, also the 2022 committee assignments, the 2022 brown bag schedule that we have quarterly with the mayor, a copy of the letter staff emailed you all on Friday, which outlines the interview process that we're engaging in tonight, the letter on the next steps if you are chosen to fill the actual vacancy, and a copy of the finalist interview questions that will be part of the interview tomorrow night, so we wanted to make sure that we got those out to you far enough in advance, number one, to consider, but we also wanted to be equitable and make sure that folks had an equal amount of time to actually go over those and consider those. That being said, each interview will last no longer than twelve minutes, when you come up, we are going to ask that you give us a brief introduction of you, both professionally, personally, discuss maybe some of those things that uniquely qualify you for the position, and then also, we are asking, and I don't believe this is actually part of your committee packet, we are asking you to let us know whether or not you intend to run for the final year of the term, which means you would have to actually run for election this year to fill the position next year. We, at the end of this process, we will open it up for committee deliberation, committee conversation, and just entertain comments from the body, and then what we will do is we will actually vote for not less than one, but not more than three of our top candidates, we are, this isn't rank order or anything of that nature, so we're just voting up to, or for up to three finalists. If, sorry, after all interviews are final, and after we have voted tomorrow, city staff will actually reach out by nine AM to those top vote getters to actually schedule those interviews that will begin tomorrow night at six PM, each interview will be thirty minutes, and will consist of a Q and A, I believe there are seven questions, and those are also part of your packet. If you are chosen to fill the vacancy, staff will contact you on Wednesday of this week by nine AM, in order to schedule a one and a half hour orientation for either Thursday or Friday. Further, Vice President Wood and myself, we will work with you to assign both standing committee and outside board and agency appointments, and if you are successful, we want to make sure you also are aware that we have our annual mandatory council training on Monday, February seventh at five thirty PM. So with that being said, because we are on a tight schedule, we are going to jump right into the second slate of candidates, the first being Mr. Samuel Kline, so if you could come on down, we certainly appreciate you being here, I'm going to come through the double doors and take us, nope, you can come right on through into the well, just go and take a seat right over here, to our left and your right, yep?
Oh no, killed my shoe.
All right, go ahead and push that button, make sure the green light is on.
It is.
Fantastic, how are you?
I'm good, how are you Adam?
You know, I'm doing really well, I appreciate you being here.
I appreciate you all being here.
Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and get you started, again, a brief introduction in terms of what you've done professionally, you know, maybe a little bit about, you know, your personal background, anything you've done in terms of community service, or anything to support folks, you know, within this community or any community you've been a part of, and then lastly, we'd like to know if you intend to run for the position should you be appointed.
Yeah, of course, of course, thank you all for being here tonight, as I just said, thank you, you know, for listening to all of us, I've gotten to speak to a lot of people, both on council and in the audience, prior to this year even, and I just really appreciate the involvement from the Lansing community. My name is Samuel Kline, I have lived in Lansing for over twenty years at this point, I've lived in the First Ward almost the entirety of my life. I think that it's sufficient to say that Lansing is a big part of who I am, the people that live here, the people that care about our city and our education system, and our streets and our parks and our roads, those are the people that raised me, that babysat me, that taught me about civics, government, being a good person, balancing a checkbook, still working on that one, and I've had, I've been able to have a really good, large network over those twenty plus years, a history of involvement that includes really large organizations, like the Michigan Mile, which is an annual project run by Sparrow Hospital at the Lugnut Stadium, that I really love being a part of, as well as much less extravagant and bureaucratic systems that focus on getting food and clothing and hygiene items to the homeless population in Lansing, as well as a group that works to build, maintain, and stock food pantries throughout the city. At the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic in 2020, I was able to help found an intersectional group that worked on critical needs and mutual aid at the time. While everyone was really uncertain about what to do and how to do it well, I was able to help work on not only resources for mental health, for unemployment benefits, for childcare, but most importantly, we worked on masks, we were able to work with people who sew for a hobby or for a living to get handmade cloth masks to homes and hospitals. We were also able to get a very large donation of food, we were able to move thousands of pounds of food from the Greater Lansing Food Bank, from community partners, individuals, from restaurants who couldn't open anyways and had inventory that was going to spoil, and we moved hundreds of different places and thousands of pounds of food, and got that directly into the homes of Lansing families. I am, I'm very enthusiastic about Lansing, and I'm very enthusiastic about the prospects that the First Ward has for the future. Oh, sorry, the other question, yes, yeah, I do intend, if I get the appointment, to run in November for the final year of this term, I think that anyone who gets the appointment should absolutely do that, it would be a detriment to city council, and it would be a detriment to the First Ward if we had four city councillors in as many years, which is democratically possible.
Certainly is, I appreciate that. So then, the next series of questions, I really intended to allow you an opportunity to build upon some of the things that you've already addressed, why do you specifically want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
Yeah, I would, I would say that I have a sense of duty about it, I would say that Lansing has, like I said in, at the beginning, continuously poured into me, and so I feel that I'm only able to speak with you all tonight, not only competently about city government, but in the English language, because of people in Lansing. When I was an immigrant from Korea and I came to Lansing, Michigan, and to America for the first time in 1999, the Lansing community was able to help me, not only through Sparrow and physical education and physical development with my physical disabilities, but also with learning the English language a couple of years later than is normally fluently acceptable. And I've also been able to not only be supported as an infant and as a toddler by Lansing, by the people, and especially by the school district and teachers and paraprofessionals, but also I've been able to be involved, I've been able to be challenged by rigorous and intense programs, some of the best in the United States, including the International Baccalaureate Program at Eastern High School, and I was able to do that, and also receive the honor of being a valedictorian when I graduated. I think that I've always had really good role models about city involvement, about public service, about giving back to a community. For example, we are sitting in the Benevides Room of the Hollister City Hall, and my friends and the families that poured into my classes in the first and second and third grades, they were the Hollister family and the Benevides family, and all sorts of, you know, really great families that cared about Lansing, cared about its children, cared about its schools, cared about each other, and so I think that that other very formative memories, you know, about being really proactively cared for is something that I feel compelled to try to continue, that other people in Lansing, everyone else in Lansing, deserves to feel as equally cared for and as equally empowered as I've always been.
All right, we appreciate that. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
There are a number of duties that I understand to be under the purview of city council, firstly, you know, logistics, there is, like you said, regular city committee assignments, committee of the whole, the internal kind of city deliberations, as well as representing the city to other municipalities, to the county, to the state, to the federal government, if Lansing needs an official representative. It's also my understanding, and the most important thing that I care about, is the appointments from the mayor, and confirming those appointments to boards and commissions. I think that the vast majority of actual work about decision making, about the way that our neighborhoods are affected and our people are affected, they really have the rubber meet the road through those boards and committees, and I think that it's incredibly important that due diligence is done, and that we encourage people that are proactive, that care about our neighborhoods, to be aware of this, that they can go out and they can apply for these positions. There are a number of backend things, I think any good leader needs to meet with the ward, they need to be communicative, they need to go to events that aren't their own events, they need to just attend events in the ward, they need to be immersed in community with people. This isn't just to feel heard, but also to just be able to hear and see and understand what people in the ward are saying, instead of just reading an email, instead of just getting a phone call, being there with them, having experience that is really a strong motivator in terms of getting public trust and faith. And then there's a lot of competence backend stuff that I think people don't really talk about and think about, you know, being able to do the readings, knowing what's coming up on the agenda, being able to read the budget, understand the budget, being able to ask questions of other people that work for the city, to make sure that you have the clarity to explain it to citizens when they have questions, when they have concerns, and to be able to take ideas from those citizens and bring it back to this body and to other bodies within city government.
All right, what qualities, Mr. Kline, can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
I would, I've asked myself that question a lot, and I think that it's really boiled down to a holistic view of, is there somebody that's going to do a good job, and also, is that person going to be able to do the right thing? Historically, there's been a lot of citizen involvement that I've been able to be involved in, that I'm proud to say that I've been a part of, not only appearing before this council before, in different iterations and in different years, but also encouraging others, being able to answer questions, know what the city does, know how the city does it, know what resources we have, and knowing what resources Lansing currently does not have, or what is more of a county or state prerogative. I think that it's incredibly important to mostly be that conduit of information between government and citizens, especially at the municipal level. One of the things that I'm most proud of that distinguishes me would be during the coronavirus pandemic, I was able to work with Thomas Morgan, who was a county commissioner at the time, there was a group of people that were in transient housing or in homelessness, and they needed the ability to be out of the cold, be out of conditions that were especially unsanitary, given our understanding of the COVID virus at the time, and we were able to work on not only getting the funding and getting spaces for them that were appropriate, but also talking to people directly and convincing them that this was a careful and loving thing that was provided for them. One of the people that was able to take advantage of this opportunity was in her third trimester of pregnancy at this time, and I recently got to tell Thomas that I'm very, very convinced that the actions that he did as a public official, the actions that I was able to do interfacing with people in the community, it saved that child, and I'm really grateful for that. The last thing that I would point out is just kind of on the endemic gun violence that Lansing is facing, I was able to speak to the county commission last year as some of these ideas have been unfolding, not because, not because I thought about running for a county commission or anything like that, but because I really care about it. Eleven and a half years ago, I lost somebody that I loved due to gun violence here in the First Ward, and it's been over a decade, and it still affects me, it still changes the way that I look at my neighborhood, and I can't imagine having that be a much more endemic thing, not just for me, but for the people that I go to school with, for the people that I care about. I think the most important thing for any government, especially for Lansing right now, is to have that level of pain, that experience with gun violence be represented as honestly and as directly as possible.
Thank you. Is there anything else you think is important for us to know before we vote later on tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kline, we really appreciate, sorry you taking the time and your willingness. Our next candidate is Mr. Ryan Cost, so if Ryan could come on down, again, through the double doors into the well, and you take a seat to the left of us, make sure the green light is on. How are you, sir?
I am very good, how are you, President Hussein?
I'm doing very well, I appreciate that. So, just as with the last candidate, please, if you could, give us a brief introduction, sorry, regarding professional and personal background, anything that maybe you've done to service the community already, not just this community, but any community you've been a part of, and then also let us know whether or not you actually intend to run should you be appointed for that last year of the term, and then what we'll do is we'll get into four very specific questions, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just to tackle that first question, I intend to run in August if there's a primary and then the general in November, if I get past the primary, and I intend to run the following year. So, my parents were lifelong residents of Lansing, and so were their parents and their parents before them. I attended Guyer Park Elementary School and grew up with fond memories of spending vast hours at my grandparents. Now, I moved to DeWitt where I attended school after second grade, participated in sports, various clubs, and I may have been living in DeWitt, but I spent much of my childhood right here in the First Ward of Lansing, near South Washington and Philly Street where my grandparents lived. Betty Cost, my nana, was very active in the community her entire life, and she made sure to know that I knew where I came from, and what it meant to be a part of a community. Little did I know, attending the after-school program at Morris Park Pool, making popsicle stick fuzzies, it would put me on a path of a lifelong craving to serve other people. She used to tell me, you work hard and love hard, and some of the fondest memories are Morris Park Pool in the summer with her watching me from the bleachers, and oftentimes I will go and sit where she sat and reflect and think. And I grew up around other people too that made Lansing a better place, Howard and Dorothy Jones, Claude Ramey, who was on park board and fought for Guyer Park, and read what my grandma wrote, and she would talk to me about issues facing the city, things like that, I was seven years old, and I found it extremely interesting. My mom's dad, Cliff, repaired water meters for the Board of Water and Light for thirty-five years. My grandpa, Kost, worked for Diamond Rio. I grew up always being told, "You fight with passion for the things you care about, and no one gets left behind." I spent my childhood doing things that other kids didn't think was fun. The month of July was always consumed with Christmas in July. And I'll never forget being on the roof of a 90-year-old's trailer, tarring it at 10 years old, helping this woman. Because my dad worked for the Sheriff's Department, we also participated in Shop with a Hero and Toys for Tots, distributing the toys on South Pennsylvania Avenue every year. We continue to do that. That is a family tradition that we do every year. I moved back to Lansing about a decade ago. Four years ago, I purchased my home on North Magnolia Street on the East Side. Over the past year, when I have gotten out of work, I have walked nearly every street in the First Ward and beyond, cleaning up neighborhoods, talking to folks who live there, and listening to the issues that they face in their everyday life. I've also gotten onto the board of the East Side Neighborhood Organization to get more involved with my community. Currently, I work for the state of Michigan. I am a proud member of the Labor and Trades Union, AFSMI Local 5, and have been since 2015. Before that, I chose to work and manage Equality Dairy in Pennsylvania and Kalamazoo, and turned it around even when they said, "You should work at the East Lansing store." I said, "No, this is where I want to be." I also spent nearly a decade at other local businesses here in the First Ward, managing at times millions of dollars in sales. The people I had the opportunity to meet working in the First Ward came from all different backgrounds, giving me life lessons in their own way each day, and that is what makes this city, to me, a community. Excuse me. I would be remiss if I did not mention the most important person in my life, my husband, Daniel, who has stood by my side as I have ventured out to help the community. And he also is a Lansing native and manages the same QD that I worked at, is an elder store manager there, and has actually partnered with some of the things that we've done in the area, allowing us to do a facade cleanup of that location, as well as use their trash. And then I also have two of the most wonderful girls on four legs, Manny and Maddie. We did not think those names out when we named them, because you shout for one and they both come. And that's just a small part of who I am and why I love Lansing and look forward to serving with you.
Fantastic. So Ryan, why do you want to serve on the Lansing City Council? Again, this is an opportunity to build upon some of the information you've already shared.
So I want to serve to make Lansing better, a livable community for all residents and businesses. I want to serve because the people of the First Ward needs a voice that hears them, their ideas and their concerns, and helps, excuse me, and helps with great outcomes for constituents for the future of our city.
We appreciate that. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Yes. So the responsibilities are actually laid out, as you know, in the City Charter, Article III, the legislative branch. A few of the responsibilities would be working as a body to make the best decisions for the citizens of Lansing, providing constituent services and bringing resources to the citizens of the First Ward, advocate for the advancement of the First Ward residents, parks, services and businesses, establish, amend, repeal ordinances, pass resolutions, deal with day-to-day issues that affect lives and safety of the citizens, review, amend, oversee and approve a city budget brought forward by the mayor, take recommendations from the mayor to address issues within the city, approve appointments to advisory boards, set ordinances forth for the qualifications of each department head. Now, I know these are just a few of the responsibilities, but I know it's also my responsibility to say, "I don't always know the answer, and I definitely don't know every rule." And it's my duty to learn from each and every one of you, because I know that's how a good council member is made, is by listening to the other members and working with them to learn.
Thank you. What qualities, Mr. Kost, can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
I spent thousands of hours working with residents of the First Ward and beyond, connecting them with city services and departments, such as the Board of Water and Light, to improve their lives. I've talked to hundreds of residents from Potter Walsh neighborhood to Grossbeck neighborhood, North Town to Fabulous Acres. I've listened to their concerns and their needs, often addressing those needs with the city. My goal is to help bring meaningful change to the places in the First Ward where people live, while building meaningful bonds with the citizens, small businesses, and our service partners like MDOT, the City of Lansing, CSX Rail, Canadian Rail, and numerous others. I know the First Ward extremely well. I enjoy being out every day and every night, either on foot or in my vehicle. Last night, I was out in the neighborhood reporting streetlights that were burnt out. That is what I do every night. And that's not a euphemism. I really do do that, because I want to stay connected to the neighborhood. And in turn, I was able to help somebody out last night that was having a medical problem. And that's important to me, is staying connected, because the neighborhood needs that connection. My experience in most of my lifetime of living in the First Ward means I can hit the ground running, looking forward to working with the Lansing City Council for positive outcomes for residents and businesses from Island Street to Philly Street. And my motivations and objectives are simple, and people will ask, "Ryan, why you do all this?" I do this because when I looked in the eyes of the residents as they told me the issues they most often face, I realized that others care deeply about Lansing and love the city as much as I do. Moreover, I had incredible mentors, as I mentioned in my bio, that set my sails towards light and doing what's right and not always what's easy. I do this because our family has public service in their DNA. We have roots in the First Ward going back well over 100 years. However, I do not do this for political reasons that are selfish. I do this because I love my city. Finally, to get to the question that was asked, which is, what are the qualities that I bring that distinguishes me from the other candidates? I bring knowledge and perspective of how the city works, the ability and experience to build working relationships with partners, both private and public, passion, finding solutions to any issue with everyone involved, because I believe there is a solution to every issue, patience, humility, and honesty.
Thank you, Mr. Kost. You've shared quite a bit. Is there anything you want to leave us with that you think is important for us to know before we consider our applicants and actually cast our final vote later tonight?
I appreciate your time, each and every one of you, and Lansing is rising.
Thank you. That brings us to Mr. Glenn Lopez. Glenn here? Fantastic. You come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening. We appreciate you being here.
I appreciate you letting me come.
Sounds like the mic is on, so I think. Mr. Lopez.
Yes, sir.
We really, really appreciate you being here. If you could, and we won't start the time until I'm done, but if you could just start with a brief introduction of.
Yes, sir.
You personally, professionally, if you could talk a little bit about some of the things that you've done to service the community just in general.
Certainly.
And then also answer that question that we've asked every candidate tonight.
Okay.
Do you plan to, if you should be appointed, do you actually plan to run to actually fill the last year of the term?
Okay.
Which means, yeah, obviously, there's an election in November.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Well, I'm Glenn Lopez, born and raised in Lansing, Michigan, the North Side, which is in Ward 1. I grew up in the North Side. I'm a proud son of Mr. Elithario and Delma Lopez. Some of you may know my mother, okay? She was an activist here in the city of Lansing, trying to do better and did better for others in the community, more so in the Hispanic community and all communities. We are all one, okay? She belonged to the Crystal Red Community Center. She was the president of the Board of Crystal Red Commission for 20 years. I'm telling her because I'm trying to follow in her footsteps. I'm a late bloomer. I'm a late bloomer, however. But she was also president of the Lansing Housing Commission for 25 years here in Lansing. While she was doing all that, I was playing baseball. I was playing softball, basketball. I graduated from Lansing Eastern High School. I'm a product of the Lansing Parks and Recreation. I was on the playground from 10 o'clock in the morning when they opened up till noon to go eat and go back to the playground, and at 6 o'clock when they were closed, I went to eat, and then they went home. The directors went home, but we still went to the playgrounds and played basketball, football, all right? So I did that for a number of years. I enjoyed it so much that I became an activity leader with the Lansing Parks and Recreation. So I was an activity leader, and this gentleman who just was sitting here, I probably was one of the leaders in his, because I remember doing those activities at Grand River Elementary School post-op, and I became a building supervisor at Guyer Community Center and Foster Community Center. I got away from that a little bit, because it was 5 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, and I started thinking, "Well, do I want to work at night a lot?" And I don't. But I am currently doing the bowling activity for Foster, okay? It's inclusion-based bowling at spare time. It's basically for special needs students. I retired, I'm retired from the Lansing School District. I worked for the Lansing School District 45 years. Most of my activities were in the special needs classroom. My first job with them was with the CCLA program with Yvonne Kamal Kudul, which was a bilingual program in the Lansing School District. I was sent out with others, Hmong, Vietnam, Hispanics, Mexican. We went to each school to help the kids in there who couldn't understand what was going on in the classroom. That's what we did. I did that for about five years. I moved on to the special needs program in Lansing. I worked at Sexton High School for 15 years. And the first eight years was in a class of autism, all righty? After that, I was transferred to the EI classroom, Emotional Pair Classroom, at Sexton. They wanted to move the classroom to Everett High School. Nothing wrong with Everett, okay? It's just so far, okay? I wanted to stay in my area, the North Lansing area. So I got a job at Eastern High School in another EI classroom for two years. This was in 2014, 15. They disbanded that and sent everyone to Beekman Center. I finished my years with the Lansing School District at Beekman Center. I was a behavior specialist for half a year. I decided to say, "It's time to go. Time for me to leave." I retired in 2015, 16, in the middle of the year, all right? Those were some great times, great times. My mother, she's an activist. I wanted to follow in her footsteps, but I was so busy with my own life, doing my own things, okay? Born and raised in Lansing, the North Side. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is because I had my grandkids out in the backyard a couple summers ago. I was just getting out of work. I work part-time, I work for a hotel. Getting out of work, got home, there was police officers on the corners of my street blocking them off. I approached them. I talked to them all the time. "So what is going on here?" There was a shooting right behind our house in the street, the street behind where we live. Kids were all over here, hot day in the pool, in the blow-up pools I had. "Well, you think I should take the kids in the house?" That would be a good idea, because they didn't catch a guy. So I thought, "Man, what is going on here in North Side? It was never like that when I was growing up." We got a fight or two, that was it. But then after that, we made friends. It's changed, completely changed. I want to try to do the best I can for you, for the citizens of Lansing, to stop this nonsense. But there's ways. There are ways, but I don't want to tell you just yet. And if I move on, then I'll tell you what I can, what I think can be done, okay? I'm just telling you. It's important to me to, I'm a late bloomer, okay? I probably should have done this a long time, when my family's been involved in the city for a number of years. I've been involved with the city a number of years, but not in this capacity. This is where it's at. You make the rules. You make decisions that we follow, whether we like it or not. We could come down here and voice our opinions Monday nights, our opinions. That's it. You make the rules. I want to help you make rules, you know? I want to be the one to say, "Yes, let's do this." "No, I don't think the people would like that." We got to remember, we're here for the people, and I also want to revive the North Side. I hear a lot about the ENO. They're doing a great job over there in the East Side. I hear a lot about the Guyer area. They're doing a great job. You're doing a great job on the South Side. I hear nothing about the North Side, nothing about the North Side. I'm the North Side. I want to revive the North Side. I can do it if I'm there, okay? I can do it if I'm there, okay? That's me.
Mr. Lopez, I may have missed it. Do you intend to run, if you are appointed? Do you intend to run to actually fill this?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Again, like so many others, you touched on a number of issues already. We want to give you an opportunity to build upon some of your answers. Why do you want to serve specifically on the Lansing City Council?
I want to be part of this body, this body, as I said, to help better this community, the community of Lansing, Michigan. Doesn't matter what side of town, east side, west side, north side, south side. We are one. We have to be one, and we can overcome a lot of problems that was going on in our little Lansing, okay? And I can do that if I'm there with you. I have ideas.
Thank you. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected?
I know that you have committees. I know that you meet during the day or whenever you have opportunities to meet. If you're a teacher, you certainly can't meet during the day, because you're busy, all right? I know that. And then you meet whenever your committees meet, committees of the whole, committees of this, committees of that. You decide this, you discuss this. Do we have enough money to do that? Do we have enough money to build over here? Can we give the North Side somebody to help them do what they would like to do on that side? It's all done through committees. I've been on committees. While I was in the Lansing School District, I served on, two years on the union. I was also, I was a contract negotiator for the union, for the LEA, which is the Lansing Educational Assistance. I occasionally still have communication with Dave. Is Dave still the president of the LEA? Do you know?
No.
He's not, okay. Well, I work with Dave a lot, and we got together. I communicate with him once in a while, but that's what you do. You get together, one or two or three people, you sit down, you sit down and discuss what you need to discuss for the betterment of the city, of the people.
Thank you. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
Me. Me being here. Me wanting to do this. I'm 68 years old. I should not be here wanting to do this, okay? I'm retired. I've got trips coming up, all right? Okay, all right? But something is calling me. Said, "Lopez, your mother says you need to get out there and help the people of the North Side." And I'm not forgetting the rest of the area of Ward 1, because they're doing well. But the North Side needs a lot of help, and I can show you. You want to walk with me in a warmer night? I will show you. I walk the North Side every night, every day, or I'm like these other guys, on my bike, all right? That's what I bring to you, me, myself, my compassion for the homeless. I talk to the homeless. They live right there. They live where I'm at. I talk to them. I help them. I offer them jobs, but they'd rather be on the corners, just so you know. I think I can help this body as best I can, and I'm willing, I have the compassion, I have the passion and the compassion to do this, should you ask, should you keep me going, okay?
All right. We appreciate that. Is there anything else you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we vote later on tonight?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Is there anything else you would like to add that you think might be important for us? for us to know before we vote?
Just just know that I'm around. I'm there. I'm a late bloomer. All this violence going around in this city has to stop, has to stop. But it's not stopping. We have to do something. I have ideas. I can give you ideas, but I'm running out of time because my idea is going to take more than fifty-five, fifty-one seconds. So should I move on? I would be more than happy to give you my ideas that I think will work. Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you and thank everybody else.
All right, that brings us to Mr. John Schneider. We have John with us here tonight. Fantastic. Come on down and join us in the well. Hello, Mr. Schneider, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well.
Fantastic. So I've seen you in the back. I know that you've kind of seen a number of folks come up and we've kind of taken them through the same, kind of the same ordeal. If you could just very quickly give us a brief introduction of yourself personally, sorry, professionally, anything you've done to serve community. Then lastly, folks have done a great job answering this last question, but whether or not you actually intend to run for the position should you be appointed, we'd appreciate that in answer to that as well. So what is yours?
Yeah, if if elected, I do intend to run again. My name is John Schneider. I've lived in the East Side for about eleven or twelve years now. Time is slipping away with COVID. But over the course of this time, I have been a web designer and I've built websites for businesses and people across the city, up into the present, as I do projects for folks outside of my regular day job. I worked for Liquid Web in their sales department for about four years. And then I switched over to working for NeoGen's corporate, helping manage and maintain their website as well across several branches, working with their like with groups in like China and Europe as well as South America. And then was part of their layoffs during COVID. When COVID hit, I I picked up some work, working with the Inglewood County Land Bank, traveling across the East Side and helping gardeners refill their water when they were having the deep heat stroke. It worked out really well because at the time I was facilitating being a stay-at-home dad with my two kids. And so it was a good job that I could take the my kids around with me to continue to work, and it was a lovely way to serve the city and meet folks all across Lansing. After that, as virtual school settled in and stabilized, I felt like I had some extra time, so I took a job as a canvasser for an organization called For Our Future, which was really lovely because I got to go door-to-door across most neighborhoods across the city of Lansing and just ask folks like what issues were most important to them and what things really mattered most in those moments and things that they needed help in addressing. It was a really lovely experience. And honestly, it really opened my eyes to to really thinking about running for public service or doing more involvement in listening to folks and trying to help advocate for their needs. After that, I moved into a senior organizing role there, which is where I am now. We are, now that COVID has really settled in, we're doing a lot more virtual, so I'm doing a lot more calling folks and still kind of asking the same basic question, which is like my favorite thing ever. As such, I have a lot of experience listening and helping people really dig down. I would say the central theme across all of my work history has been gravitating towards a like a more like consulting aspects of every job. I really enjoyed working with each person individually and listening and helping them really find the root of their problems, helping them find like the the root thing that needed to be solved and helping them better understand their own thoughts and feelings about it and work to find a solution from there. I found I've been really effective in that role and it's been really helpful. In terms of helping with the with the city and with my community, I have played a support role. I, my ex-wife worked as a urban manager for Urbandale Farm, and I've been involved with folks over at Eno in various capacities, mostly through that. I used to put on my name tag Farm Wife as I played a mostly supportive role, which was lovely. But my, most of my like workday was taken up with with my work. And then also after that, I would spend most of my time with my kids. So that is the like the majority of kind of where I come from. I wasn't really ever planning or expecting to run for something like this or even considering it, but as I've talked to more folks and as I was going door-to-door, more and more people were asking me if I was, which was first awkward and then kind of became more and more sensible as other people have told me that I should consider it.
Fantastic, we appreciate that. Are there other things that you want to add regarding why you want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
Yeah, I I want to serve on City Council because serving is in my blood and it's part of who I am. I deeply appreciate and enjoy and find value and and passion in listening to others and helping find solutions to problems as they are presented, helping dig down to the very roots and cores of things to to find effective and reasonable things across that that work for people with different views or motives or desires for the city. It's it's always been something that I've deeply and passionately enjoyed, and I see that as a core facet of this job, and I think that that would be effective, and that's why I want to do it, so I can serve.
Great. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Yeah, I know that there's a bevy of things. I don't I don't know them as well as I would like. I know that you listen to appointments provided by the mayor. I know that you manage and oversee the budget and the pooled resources of the city to help meet the needs of daily life and maintenance therein. I know that a lot of the job is listening and and working to present and advocate for the folks of the First Ward for me specifically and make sure that like businesses here are taken care of and that we have the things that we want to make our city thrive.
Thank you. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
Yeah, I have some experience working on boards, but I think that really the thing that is most distinguished for me is my strong passion for the city and for the people that I meet and work with every single day, my neighbors and the businesses that are sprinkled across Michigan Avenue, the businesses that are sprinkled across Combsu and on the North Side. These are all things that that need help right now as we work to try to find a new way forward and try to find a way to make life work in the middle of COVID and as we explore this new life moving forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schneider, we still do have a little bit of time. Is there anything you think is important to add before we actually vote later on tonight?
No, I don't think so at this time. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. We really appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, that brings us to Mr. Farhan Sheikh Omar. All right, come on up. How's it going? Good to see you. We appreciate you being here.
Good to see you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is the green light on?
Yeah.
All right, fantastic. All right, Farhan, so what we'd like is just a brief introduction professionally, personally, you know, those things that, you know, maybe uniquely qualify you for the position, anything you've done to serve as community. And lastly, is there an intent, should you be appointed, to actually run for that last year of the term?
All right. President Adam Hussein, council member Spatterford, council member Spisley, council member Brown, council member Jackson, council member Garza, vice president Carol Wood. Good evening. I want to thank you guys for this incredible opportunity. Just to knock off the first question, yes, I will run next year or this year. My name is Farhan Sheikh Omar. My family and I came here as refugees in two thousand and five. Now, this was time when tensions were very high in this country after nine eleven. However, I still remember the kindness and openness and open heart that this community and this city showed to my family and I. It is why I firmly believe that Lansing is and has always been a city of promise and possibility. The First Ward needs a leader who will listen to all sides of issues and be able to communicate with opponents, supporters and colleagues. I've always been a leader who stands with this community to come up with solutions. I will always protect public trust and work from a place of integrity. Our ward has been divided, and I would like to bring unity, healing and stability to this ward. What I do personally is I work for the school district, the Lansing School District. I am an assistant instructor. But as you know, Adam, when teachers are out due to COVID, you know, I I get called and I got a sub and do all that fun stuff. But I really, I am seeking this office not because of power, not because of fame, not because of title, any of that. I am seeking simply to improve lives and to bring people together and serve the First
Okay, thank you. To build on that, why do you want to serve on the Lansing City Council?
As I said, I am not seeking this office for money, fame or power. I am guided by principle, not driven by an agenda. I will bring transparency, honesty, openness and a sincere willingness to compromise. I'm not here, nor am I interested, to make headlines. I simply want to improve lives. I simply want to make this city a better city for everyone to live in and to thrive. The city has given my family and I many opportunities. Till this day, it has given me many opportunities, and now I would like to return those favors and give back to those who need it most.
Okay, fantastic. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
As someone who has run for previous positions, you know, you hear it all the time, you know, this is a strong mayor system and city council doesn't have any powers. And that's simply not true. You know, this is the body that not only reviews our budget, but actually approves it. And so if there's anything in the budget that city council does not like, they can send it back to the mayor and and if he vetoes it, city council can override that veto. So this is also the body that establishes tax rates. This is also the body that passes ordinance and resolutions. This is also the body that regulates land use through zoning laws. This is the body that regulates business activities through licensing and regulations. This is the body that communicates policies and programs to residents. This is the body that responds to community needs and complaints. So I believe this this body does a lot of incredible work and it holds a lot of power. And with power comes responsibility. And so I respect the work that you guys do and I thank you guys for your service.
Thank you for that. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
I believe community awareness is the first step in effective community engagement. Diversity is what makes our community unique compared to other neighboring cities or even townships. By appointing me, you are giving voice to many communities. I can help bridge the gap between the Somali community and the Lansing City Council, the Muslim community and the Lansing City Council, the African American community and the City Council, our youth and the City Council. Many of the kids who are dying in the city are only eighteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty. These kids are about a decade or even less younger than me. So when they see someone who's very close to them age-wise, who they can relate to, I I believe you guys will have an ambassador, someone who can go into the community and build bridges. You know, we would love to have city council members come to our mosque. You know, we have a mosque in East Lansing, but we also opened up a new mosque in Lansing on Pennsylvania, North Pennsylvania. So we would love to have you guys come during Ramadan, join us during Eid and, you know, confirm what we already know, which is Lansing is very diverse and we embrace diversity in this city.
Excellent, thank you. Is there, sorry, is there anything else you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we vote later tonight?
I've always worked from a place of integrity, and I don't do things because they're popular. I will always do what's right over what's popular, and I am willing to come on board, be a sponge, learn from you guys. You guys are the veterans. I want to learn from you guys. I want to help serve the city, continue to serve the city, and I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. You guys do an incredible job, and I, I and along with the Lansing residents all watching here tonight and those watching us from home, we're grateful for your service.
We truly do appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That brings us to our last candidate, Mr., and I hope I'm saying this right, Tierston Walters. Fantastic, come on down. All right, Mr. Walters, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm doing really, really well. So again, you're the last person. I think you've been here since six P M., so we certainly appreciate your commitment to the process.
I appreciate you.
If you could, again, just introduce yourself, give us some of that personal professional background that is unique to you, as well as any, you know, service to community that you think is pertinent to the position that you've applied for. And then lastly, let us know whether or not you intend to run for the final year of the term should you be appointed. Thank you.
All right, to knock it out first so I don't forget, yeah, I do intend on running if I'm honored with the appointment to this position in twenty-two and the full term in twenty-twenty-three. I'm currently a State of Michigan employee for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, based out of Okemos, but I live in Lansing in the First Ward. I was formerly a student assistant with the Department of Technology Management and Budget. When COVID hit, I was sent home from that job. While I was away, I began volunteering at the Constellation Cat Cafe in East Lansing, where I then worked in the future. And then I worked for the Potter Park Zoo right here in Lansing. My educational background, I graduated from Michigan State University in twenty-twenty. While I was at Michigan State, I was active on campus. I was president of the MSU Geography Club. I ran for the Associated Students of Michigan State University while I was there, and I also attended Mott Community College in Flint prior to transferring to Michigan State. While I was at Mott, I was active in the community there. I volunteered at the Whaley Children's Center in Flint, and I was also a a regular volunteer at the Special Olympics of Michigan.
All right, thank you. Why do you want to run, Mr. Walters, to serve on the Lansing City Council?
Yes, so ever since I've come to Lansing, when I transferred to Michigan State University, I've absolutely loved the city. I love the people. I love the culture. I love the history of the city and its place as the capital of the state of Michigan. I also have just a passion to serve the people and try to make the lives of every citizen, not only in the First Ward, but of the city as a whole, better, ensuring that everyone has an equal opportunity to succeed as they go on both with education and employment. And I just would like to affect change at a larger level that would allow me to do more things to assist people going forward.
All right, thank you so much. What do you know about the responsibilities and regular activities of this elected position?
Yeah, so they're obviously the legislative body of the city of Lansing. They oversee the budget, but more than that, you meet with local leaders, you meet with citizens, you advocate for either your ward or the city as a whole, you work to improve the lives of the citizens of Lansing. And additionally, you're the voice of the people. So if you are a ward representative, you listen to the people of your ward, you gather what they care about, what matters to them, and then you advocate for that. You advocate for the city as a whole. I truly believe Lansing is a fantastic city, and I think it can be one of the leading cities in the state of Michigan and as the country as a whole. and I think it can be one of the leading cities in the state of Michigan and as the country as a whole going forward.
Okay, thank you. What qualities can you bring to the council that distinguish you from other candidates?
Yeah, so I think I could offer a fresh perspective to the council in ways of outreach and communication to definitely the younger crowd of Lansing. I think there are a lot of ways of communication that aren't utilized specifically by the council, like social media or just other avenues outside of the current ones used. And I feel like that could be somewhere that I could assist as a council member. I also have experience within a legislative body, working at Michigan State as the president of the MSU Geography Club. While I was there, I oversaw the writing of the club constitution. I oversaw getting it approved as a registered student organization within the university. And also just working within the community, different events, assisting with the Constellation Cat Cafe for getting cats adopted in the area, and also the rescuing portion with Save by Zaid. So just different things that I've done. Also, I currently have experience within a governing body, working for the state of Michigan. I'm a current state employee with MDHHS, so I understand that things in government work a different way than elsewhere. And I feel like I have definitely experience with that, working as a student assistant prior, as a department technician now. That gives me a little bit of insight as to how things work, how things can be more efficient, and how things can be done better going forward. And I feel like I could offer that to the City Council as well, ways to innovate and improve going forward and to make sure that the people of Lansing have a governing body that is looking out for them and is assisting them improve as they go forward.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anything else you'd like to add that you think is important for us to know before we vote later on tonight?
Yeah, so I just absolutely appreciate the opportunity. I know it's getting a little late and it's a little warm in here, so I appreciate everybody staying and listening tonight. And I'd really just like to make sure that the city of Lansing allows each and every citizen, both in the First Ward as an advocate for them and the city as a whole, has an equal opportunity to succeed. Some things that I'm personally passionate about, public safety, ensuring that citizens are safe and secure, working to increase voter turnout for elections. I feel like the vote is something that matters a whole lot, that a whole lot of people don't utilize as often as I believe they should. And I think as a councilperson, you can either use the official seat or a more informal method to increase voter participation. That's something I'm personally passionate about. And also ensuring that every citizen in Lansing has the opportunity to have equal opportunities for success through both education and through employment. One thing that I've truly appreciated from the council and the budget priorities is the GED Passage and Prep Program. I'm personally very pro-education, child of two parents who dedicated their entire lives to education. And I truly believe that through education that everybody can improve and society as a whole can advance a whole lot more than without. And so just, I'd appreciate the opportunity to utilize those and to offer the city something new.
Fantastic. We certainly appreciate you being here. We appreciate the time that you committed to us tonight. And best of luck.
All right, thanks.
All right, folks. So for those of you still in attendance, I want to say just how much I appreciate you all kind of sticking with us through this process. Folks that, that know me, kind of know my personality, know that I'd rather just sit down and, and talk issues and hash things out and really figure out, you know, going from there, what the best path forward is. But, but again, this was a, a process that was, was necessary. I appreciate my colleagues accommodating. And again, certainly appreciate your patience in the audience. That being said, before we get on to discussion action item 5M, which is the actual voting on First Ward Councilmember finalists, what I want to do is open it up for some conversation, some commentary, potentially some deliberation. But even if you want to keep those comments general, just to the crap of individuals we have in front of us and maybe the process, this is, this is the time. So do we have any comments, questions, anything? Mr. Garza?
Thanks, Council President. I just want to take the time to say thank you all for being here tonight. Win or lose, I hope I still can see you, continue to see you in the community, working for your passions and, and moving the city forward. So thank you for your, your hard work and being here in front of us and, and telling us about your stories. So thank you.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna piggyback on what Councilmember Garza said, and, and thank you all for being here. I can't imagine, you know, it must be incredibly difficult. But I, I do want to stress that, you know, in the, in the event you are not chosen, there are so many boards and commissions that we have that I would encourage you to join and encourage you to avail yourselves upon. You know, that, you know, when you talk about the real work in council is, you know, but the real work a lot of times is also on boards and commissions. And they do, and they impact how the city is run in ways that you just, you never know. Councilmember Hussein and I started on Parks Board. I had no idea how, you know, important it was, the Parks Board was. And so if you're not selected, I would please encourage you to look at the boards and commissions that we have on our webpage and, and apply for one of those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everybody who came out. It's gonna be a very difficult choice. And I know it's not, but I just want to double down on if this was ranked choice voting, we could truly just pick our top three and not worry about any scheming or if they go against each other or anything like that. So it's gonna be very hard. And, and it's not personal to anybody of, you know, I don't choose you. Everybody would do a great job, but it's just the nature of what we have to do today. So thank you for applying.
Vice President Wood, Councilman Spitz, or I'm sorry, Spatafor, and then we'll go to Mr. Brown. Did you want to end? Okay, let's go to Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo comments from my colleagues to folks out there in the audience. I really appreciate the weight, 11 folks interested in stepping up to serve the city. A lot of times, these types of appointments, you see no one apply in, in communities across, across the state. And it's really refreshing to see so many qualified and interesting candidates serve in these roles. I'll echo, there's gonna be one person selected tonight, or tomorrow, rather. And I will echo again what everyone said. Not getting the appointment does not mean that your career in public service should be over. The Lansing School Board passed on me about 15 years ago, and I showed them. So I, I would encourage you all to continue to stay involved in your community and do what you can as you've continued to, as you've always done, but to make a difference in our community. You can do that from a lot of places that is not at this table. But I still am just very refreshed and pleased to see so many competent and just super-qualified candidates show up tonight and express interest in, in joining the Lansing City Council and serving our city. There are a lot of things to think about, and we've got to make a decision tonight. But I just wanted to make sure that I threw my thanks in there as well, because it, it takes a lot to sit down in front of this, this well with the flame-throwing lights and set and all that and make your case. So thank you very much.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Hussein. I just wanted to say, first and foremost, thank you to yourself as well as Vice Chair Carol Wood and Sherri Boak for doing a phenomenal job in this process with absolute integrity. To everybody who has applied, you know, we truly do appreciate you to come down, to share your story, to have that transparency and put yourself out there because you want to be the difference in your community. So I, I'm honored that you would come and very appreciative, and we thank you. And of course, as everyone else has said, there's only one candidate that can be appointed. But I echo Councilwoman Spitzley that even myself, I was on a board and commission as well. And the work that I've been able to do in that capacity has been very impactful and eye-opening for the city as well. So good luck.
Thank you so much. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their diligence here. And I watched everybody taking notes and paying extreme amount of attention to the speakers. I want to thank everyone who came out this evening, who made the choice to apply. It, as many of us have said, it's not always easy to sit there and talk to council and know that you're being watched on TV. Sometimes when you're knocking on those doors during a campaign, it's one-on-one and you feel closer to the public at that point versus sitting here and being judged. We have a phenomenal group of people to pick from. So whoever we pick, I believe we will be forever grateful for that person who comes and fills the position for First Ward. So I want to thank you for applying. I want to thank you for making the job tough. It is the tough decisions that, when you're sitting here as a council member, that help make you a better council member as well, weighing those decisions and how it will impact the community. We understand that. So again, thank you for coming out. Thank you for being part of the process. As everyone has said, there's other ways, if you are not chosen, that you can, again, continue to serve the community. And we know that we can reach out and help you if there are things that you're interested in. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't say any better than, than the six of you. What I will say is, as I, as I looked through the, the applications, as I looked through the resumes, I knew we had an incredible group of people. When you came down here, the, the passion that we felt and the commitment, I don't know that I was expecting that from every single person that sat in that seat. And, and candidly, I did not know this was gonna be as difficult of a decision as we now essentially find ourselves resting with. First Ward, no matter what happens, is in really good hands. Because what I know is not only will the individual that's appointed do the work of fiercely advocating for the First Ward, but I know that everybody in this room is going to work with that individual in fiercely advocating for the First Ward. And so I think it's a, it's a phenomenal day to be a First Ward resident, truly. And I, I think folks should be really, really proud of what they saw here tonight. With that being said, what we are going to do, folks, so in the pocket on the right side of your binder is your ballot. And again, you can vote for not more than three candidates. We will then have staff collect. Make sure you sign that ballot, and then we, we will have those read into the record. Okay? Thank you. Fantastic. All right, Officer, what's, I'm sorry. Fantastic. Okay, so if we could have Clerk Boak, she will actually read the ballots into the record.
Councilmember Spitzley, we have Brian Daniels, Benjamin Dodd, and Farhan. Farhan, I'm sorry. Farhan Shakir Omar. Councilmember Wood, we have Brian Daniels, Lysandra Jones, Ryan Kost. For Councilmember Garza, we have Brian Daniels, Benjamin Dodd. For Councilmember Jackson, we have Caitlin Kavanaugh, Brian Daniels, and Farhan Sarik Omar. Councilmember Hussein, we have Brian Daniels, Benjamin Dodd, Ryan Kost. Councilmember Brown, we have Caitlin Kavanaugh, Brian Daniels, and Samuel Klon. And for Councilmember Spatafor, we have Caitlin Kavanaugh, Brian Daniels, Benjamin Dodd. That's what I showed for the top three. Is that what you showed?
All right, folks. So, and I do know that Clerk Swope in the back was also tallying. What we came out with was seven votes for Brian Daniels. Benjamin Dodd had four. And Caitlin Kavanaugh, to round out the top three, ended, ended up with three votes. Okay? So what's going to happen from here, since we did not have a tie in that third-place position, what's going to happen is staff will actually reach out to you three by 9:00 AM tomorrow to schedule those 30-minute interviews. We'll, we're gonna delve just a little bit deeper. You have already received those questions. Okay, so we do ask that you guys arrive potentially early for that. We will obviously start the meeting as we always do with public comment. That public comment may last up to 30 minutes. But should it not, we want to be able to get started immediately. Again, we want to thank you for being here. We want to thank you for your service to the community. And, and for those folks that were not chosen to go on to the next round, please stay involved. And I personally would love to grab a coffee with you and, and figure out how we're gonna work to move this community together. I'm sorry, move this community forward together in the very near future. Okay? Thank you so much. With no other business before the body, folks, we are adjourned at 8:45.